We'll go ahead and start, call to order. It's Monday, September 8, 2025, and thank everyone for being here. We appreciate you coming out tonight. As far as determination of quorum, it's like we're all here, so let's thank you guys for being here tonight. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, counsel, do we have any additions? I have one, but we have any additions or deletions, adoptions to the agenda?
Just the one, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we add a spot here for Nancy Anderson, retired Colonel Anderson, to make some remarks on the passing of Michael Verardo, one of our--
Okay, and that'd be just after the conflict of interest statement?
If we can do that.
Okay. Anyone else, any additions, deletions?
Pardon me, Mayor?
All in favor?
Pardon me, Mayor? Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I would like to add, request that we add item B under the presentation of proclamations, presentation for proclamation 2025-04 for Disability Inclusion Month.
Okay, the less included land then?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. It'd be eight, eight B, correct, or eight A?
Well, we'll make it, we'll make it eight B and we'll make the constitutionally eight A.
Okay, all right. All right, any others? Okay, all right, all in favor? Okay, unanimous? Okay, we'll move forward. Conflict of interest statement. In accordance with state law, is the duty of every council member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any council member have any non-conflict of interest with respect to any matter on the agenda? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the matter involved.
I do. Item 11.
Item 11? Okay. All right. So the next item would be Nancy, Nancy Anderson would come up for a presentation as a tribute to Sergeant Michael Verardo.
Excuse me, fall allergies already.
Yep.
First counsel, thank you for amending your agenda so that I can speak tonight. This is not the sort of thing you can plan on. I'm sure everyone has noticed the flags flying out there. Can't hear me? Sorry. Is this better? Okay. Is that better? Okay, there you go. I'm sure everyone has noticed the flags flying out in the roundabout. Those were placed in tribute to Sergeant Michael Verardo. Michael unexpectedly, but quietly passed away on August 27. He died from complications resulting from severe combat wounds that he sustained while serving alongside his brothers from the 82nd Airborne in Afghanistan. Sorry, we're personal friends, so this is kind of hard. We just stood and pledged allegiance to our flag, but for some people, it has a much deeper meaning, and he was one of them. If you didn't know Michael personally, I just want to introduce you a little bit to him, so that you have an understanding of this extraordinary man. Sergeant Michael Verardo was a proud warrior, husband, father, and man of faith. Post 9/11, Michael tried to join the Army right away, but he had to get a waiver because he couldn't pass a physical. He was actually wounded twice while he was in Afghanistan. The first time, he was eligible to be sent back home to recuperate, but he insisted on staying in country with his brothers. About eight weeks later, he was catastrophically wounded after stepping on a landmine. His mangled body was loaded onto an helicopter and airlifted off the battlefield. His wounds were so severe that he was placed on the death is imminent list. His heart stopped twice en route to the medical treatment at Long Stool Air Base. But Michael survived. Over the next 15 years, he overcame over a hundred, he underwent over 120 surgeries to try to piece his broken body back together. But his battle was not over. Michael fought as hard on the home front as he did on the battlefield. Michael fought alongside his wife Sarah, a true warrior herself, and quite honestly, probably deserves her own Purple Heart. Together, they raised three beautiful children while simultaneously fighting here at home for veteran benefits. We call it surviving survival. The Verardo family did much more than survive. They helped thousands through their organization, the Independence Fund. The Independence Fund has been instrumental in shaping legislation and untangling the bureaucracy of the VA. They have, over 2,700 wounded veterans have received an all-terrain track wheelchairs from TIV to overcome their mobility limitations. They developed programs to support the caregivers and launched Operation Resiliency, which focused on mental health and suicide prevention in combat veterans. During the chaotic withdrawal from Afghanistan, the Independence Fund joined with another nonprofit called Save Our Allies. Together, they extracted 17,000 Afghan interpreters who had been embedded with the U.S. military, fulfilling the creed, leave no man behind. One of those translators happened to be assigned to Sergeant Verardo's unit and watched as they put Michael's bleeding body on the helicopter. Purely by chance, or maybe divine intervention, they were reunited here in Weddington 10 years later. Michael Verardo was a true patriot, a true American hero in every sense of the word. He served his country and paid the ultimate price. So, the next time you say, "Thank you for your service," to a veteran or service member, this is what I want you to ask yourself. How can I serve? What can I do? Maybe you can volunteer at school or at the library, serve on an elected board or a committee, maybe coach a youth sports team, or increase your charitable giving, even so something, even something so simple as mowing someone's yard. In closing, I just wanted to share part of the Verardo creed with you. Let me try this again. I just want to share part of the Verardo family creed with you. Be the somebody. Be the somebody who lives their faith, their values, and their morals out loud and with conviction. It's not always easy to do the right thing, but it is always worth it. So, in tribute not just to Michael, but to all who have served, I challenge you, be the somebody. Make his sacrifice worth it.
Thank you, Nancy, I really appreciate that. And you know, I went to the funeral, a lot of us did, and it was incredible. Quite a tribute to Sergeant Verardo, and this family has done a tremendous amount of good across the country, helping veterans, and there's no amount of price you can put on that for ones who have, who have made the sacrifice and gone and gone through what they've gone through. I was talking to Vice President Pence after the funeral, and he said, you know, you've got a beautiful town here, and he said, you know, really, thank you for the warm welcome, you know, that I felt here. And also, he said, especially, he said, I want, I want you to share this with your council and with the town, that the family has really felt a warmness, a welcome, they have felt the love of the town and the community. And he said, I wanted to, you know, if you could let your council and the town know that. And he said, again, thank you for what you've done here in Weddington, and that's from Vice President Pence. So, I can't, I can't say thank you enough for, and Nancy, what you guys have done in this as well. So, thank you. Counsel, anyone have anything to say or move forward?
I think Nancy summed it up well.
Okay. And I know you're in the Air Force. Okay, all right. Thank you again, Nancy, I really appreciate that. Thank you. We're going to move forward to mayor and council reports. Does anyone have anything to add in this?
I'll just mention, we did have the Western Union Municipal Alliance meeting about two weeks ago in Wesley Chapel. As we've been experiencing, everybody's talking about their tax bills and their tax rates, that was sort of the dominating topic of discussion. The next meeting will be on Thursday, the 25th is up on my calendar up here, in Stallings at 4:00. If you're available and you'd like to sit in, that's where it will be, at Stallings Town Hall.
What will the topic be?
Right now, we don't have any set topic. I will, one alibi, though, I did, our rep from Waxall, Susanna Wedra, as we discussed last time about where do all these things sit about the state trying to take over the zoning? I did not realize this, but Waxall has a paid lobbyist in Raleigh, and she told us that their lobbyist in Raleigh said that it ain't dead yet, that all of that stuff has been farmed out, and they're trying to put it in different bills to see how much they can get through. So, please pay attention to that, please let Todd Johnson, David Willis know, you know, your feelings on--
We need to be vigilant about this.
Yes.
Needless to say.
Tomorrow at 6:30 at Wesley Chapel Village Hall is the Trees Union Board Meeting, and they want to talk about ways to enhance our county's tree canopy, as well as go over the stewardship training program that they're going to be launching this fall. So, if anyone's interested in being a part of that, be there tomorrow, 6:30.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
I got one.
Okay.
Got a response back from DOT on some of the road paving in town, and I asked the question of what type of surface treatment they were doing on most of our roads, and the answer was, because I said, it looks like to me they're doing some type of tar and gravel over the existing roads, and she said back, you're correct. These roads receive a double-seal asphalt surface treatment with a fog seal. This type of treatment is a pavement preservation treatment applied to extend the life of an asphalt road after patching has been done. It is generally recommended for roads that only need what we would consider a light patching and provides a more cost-effective option so that what funding we do get for resurfacing goes further. So, that is the response from DOT on what they are using on most of our roads, and you can see, it is not as nice as full asphalt, but it is what we are getting after they patched the worst of the places, and that's the way they're doing it with the limited funds. I mean, honestly, they usually schedule five or six streets a year in Weddington. That's the number we've been seeing, and as we know, huge amount of development happened in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and those roads are, you know, 30, 40 years old and have not been touched, and it's woefully inadequate amount of work that's being done. So, all we can do is push for more and try to get more roads onto the list as they become deemed the worst, and it's, it's a challenge. It is a challenge, so I do stay on about it. That's my report.
Okay. Anyone else? Brandon, anything?
I have none.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll move forward then. Public comments. Thank you. Okay. And just, you know, as a reminder, keep them to three minutes a week? Four minutes? Four minutes, okay? And Debbie will be timing us. Gail Butler, come on up.
I just want to reflect a little bit about what Nancy said, because I have, my dad was in the Air Force, and I have two sons that are serving currently in the military. So, I do, and I do honor him. Thank you, council members. I am Gail Butler. I'm here to talk about the downtown overlay proposed update. I was involved in the surveys, and the majority spoke, and we did not want the overlay. If we're going to add any more commercial, we can do it on this side of Providence Road. Where can we get, excuse me. I thought we were very clear, but I am going to speak tonight, and I don't want to, I really didn't want to. This matter should be settled already. It has dragged on for months, and I think we are all tired. It's been this way for over 10 years, and nothing has changed. The town has spoken, and we should not change a map which goes against everything that we own, or everything that we've had. Please stop this now. I am tired of hearing about this as a majority, the minority of the town has said, the majority of the town has said over and over again, we do not want this. When will you listen, please? We will have the process for a, we have this process for a reason, and it's what makes Weddington so special. And I just want to say that I was horrified that the disrespect that was shown to our Weddington Town Council by Jared Palisca, it hurt, it hurt. I thought that he was not nice and very disrespectful. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Wendy Shaw?
Wendy Shaw, and tonight, surprisingly, I'm not addressing the town council, I'm addressing my fellow neighbors that are here, that are watching live stream, or will read the minutes. C.J. Lewis stated that integrity is doing the right thing even when no one is watching. As we are in the midst of the upcoming election and what is going on within our town, it truly disgusts me. We all know how corrupt politics are, but I never thought we'd experience it here. At what point does anyone have the right to use their position, whether it be a town leader, social media guru, or even a simple resident, to bully, degrade, mock, or attack a fellow neighbor's integrity and character? It doesn't matter who you are, how much money you have or don't have, what size house you live in, how long you've lived here, or how many social media platforms you've created or commented on. No matter our party affiliation or who we are voting for, it does not give us the right to attack anyone. Everyone needs to have their own beliefs and convictions, but as a community, we need to agree to disagree and stop trying to sabotage campaigns of those running for office and violating a person's freedom of speech is totally unacceptable. People in Weddington know our elected officials are not the ones that are running this town. My question to those who are hiding behind a computer or a checkbook with their own personal agendas is, would it hinder your ability to control the town if you simply ran for a single seat yourself? And what does preserve Weddington really mean? Well, that depends on who you ask. The old Weddington in which I had the privilege of knowing, living here for 53 years, was made up of simple, warm-hearted, hard-working people who helped others without personal agendas. They welcomed people into this community and were proud of what they had here. It wasn't about wealth, it was about human decency. They were fair to one another, even if they didn't agree. Today, it's all about what some people want Weddington to be, while dictating and manipulating others through deceit. We have to stand up for what we believe as individuals, and at the end of the day, know that we have lived by our own convictions, not someone else's. We all need to be reminded that whoever is careless with the truth in small matters cannot be trusted with important matters.
Thank you, Wendy. Reagan Shaw? Reagan?
Hello, my name is Reagan Shaw, I'm 24, and unlike most in this room, I can say I was born and raised here in our beloved town of Weddington. Growing up in Weddington was a town everyone wanted to be a part of. We had the small-town feeling where everyone knew everyone, and a trip to the corner store was not taken unless your hair was fixed and makeup was on because you were liable to see everyone you knew while there. To me, Weddington was like family. It was where you could run across the street to borrow some sugar, call a neighbor in a bind, or simply have an army of loving neighbors swarming and stepping in when a loved one passes. Weddington is all I know, it's home. I was gabbing over coffee with my grandmother, who has been a resident of Weddington for over 60 years. Speaking of how Weddington used to be, she recently found an article titled, "Weddington, Our Hometown," written by Jeff Perryman, submitted on May 3, 2008, in which I will now quote my favorite lines. It has been said that home is where the heart is, and that simple statement explains Weddington and how I spent home for so many through over the years. In 2008, we are celebrating the 25th anniversary of Weddington's official incorporation. We pause to reflect on our history, our pride, and our future. Weddington was no stranger to its new growth, but something was different here. The residents were proud of their rural atmosphere and down-home feel. The leaders of the community wanted to ensure things that Weddington, that holds Weddington's unique capabilities and preserved for the future. We are officially 25 years old now, with a rich history behind us and rich possibilities ahead. Much has changed about Weddington since 1983, but one thing remains certain. Our town remains committed to keeping the spirit and character of Weddington alive for those who are here now and for those who will come after us. In Weddington today, you can't trust your neighbor's sugar. The down-home feeling is fading, and the lifetime members of Weddington now only have the memories of what Weddington used to be to cling to. I never wanted to leave, but I'm homesick for a Weddington that doesn't seem to exist anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Reagan. Ann Marie Cruz?
Hi, good evening. Good evening, council members, neighbors, and friends. I'm here tonight, not as, just as a resident of Weddington, but as a member of a family that has lived, worked, and cared for this land for generations. Our town is changing, yes, but what makes Weddington special isn't just its location. Low taxes and great schools, it's the open spaces, quiet fields, the places where the land still speaks, and we believe that voice is still worth protecting. Over the years, parts of the Hunter and Delaney Farms were sold to developers. Communities like Bromley, Atherton, Highgate, and Enclave all trace their roots back to these lands. Those decisions were made with care, supporting responsible growth and helping change shape a thriving Weddington. Our family has always believed in balancing progress and preservation. This is why our family made the decision in 2002 to place the remaining portion of the Hunter Farm into a permanent conservation through the Catawba Land Conservancy. This wasn't a decision made lightly. It was a choice rooted in love for the land, for our agricultural history, and for the rural character that defines Weddington. We did this not only to preserve open space, but to honor the legacy of farming and a community that has shaped our lives and this town's identity. We also believe deeply in personal property rights, and this decision reflects that belief. As landowners, we chose conservation. We chose to protect, not just for ourselves, but for future generations. While there is much discussion and a lot of confusion about what falls within the downtown core, the commercial overlay, or even which areas are even zoned commercial for future use, we want to be absolutely clear on one issue. This land cannot ever be developed. It cannot be turned into a neighborhood or a commercial site. Commercial sprawl onto the Hunter Farm cannot and will not ever happen. That protection is permanent. It is a matter of public record filed with the Union County Register of Deeds held by the Catawba Land Conservancy. There is no ambiguity here. There is no loophole, no future rezoning. This land will remain open space forever. The Hunter Farm has long been a place where families gather, children learn, and the seasons are marked by strawberry fields and pumpkin patches, not traffic lights and strip malls. By protecting this land, we are preserving a way of life. We're saying that farmland isn't just soil, it is memory. It is culture, it's a living archive to those of who we are and who we hope to remain. We understand that growth is part of any town story, but growth without memory is just expansion. What we need is stewardship, partnered with thoughtful and intentional development. We need leadership that recognizes that not every acre should be built on and that some spaces deserve to be left open, wild and rooted. Let the Hunter Farm stand as a symbol of that choice. Let it remind us that rural charm is not a relic, it's a living, breathing part of our community, and let us be proud, not just of the spaces we fill, but the ones that we leave open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Marie. Craig Horn, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a little strange being up here. I had pretty well promised myself when I left office, I was not going to be coming back to talk to you or present or encourage you to vote for or against anything. Sometimes things happen, and we all get a little carried away with, or maybe not carried away, we get energized by things that are going on. I can't, I can't help but often reflect on the role of town government and the role of any government. As most of you know, I've spent 18 years in elective office. I understand very well how easy it is to finger wag and finger point, call names, and make unfounded accusations of corruption and all kinds of other stuff, nefarious activities. I am very confident that we don't have that in Weddington, nor should we, nor have we. I want to reach out to you tonight to ask you to think deeply about the decisions you're making, not just shot from the hip, but think deeply about the implications. As a government, I think our first responsibility is public safety. That's the first responsibility of any public, any public body. Secondly, it's to protect the rights of the people of their jurisdiction, and those rights are property rights, as well as the right to, to live in an environment up to a point. We want to protect our property rights, whether it's you telling me what I can and can't build on my property, or us telling someone else, I don't want you to have that on your property because it infringes on my right. Well, the reality of life is that there is no guarantee to an environment. If I want to see a beautiful landscaped meadow, then I better buy the property and I can have my beautiful landscaped meadow, rather than telling somebody that owns that meadow, you can't develop it, as long as you follow the law. So, I'm encouraging you to keep that balance in place, as long as they follow the law. And that comes, brings me to talking about the overlay issue. Now, I believe that there's been a mistake made in how we apply the overlay. We've got a parcel outside the overlay that's zoned commercial, cannot expand in any-- cannot expand on either side. It is zoned commercial, it's been zoned commercial, it pays taxes as a commercial land use. So therefore, as long as they follow the law, they should be able to develop that land as they see fit, as long as they follow the law. I also note that we have in this commercial overlay some land that is zoned residential. I want you to understand, I would work very hard to oppose rezoning that residential land to commercial land. I agree with what I've heard people say here at the podium and around town, that we don't want or need additional commercial zoning. I agree with that. We don't want or need additional commercial zoning. So as long as people follow the law, then I'm fine with it, and I think the people in town are fine with it. I'm always amused at those that talk about how everybody in town either likes something or doesn't like something. Well, we don't know what everybody in town likes or doesn't like. We've got 14,000 people here, we may have talked to 20, we may have talked to 200, but we haven't talked to 14,000. So that's just a little disingenuous. The hyperbole that has floated around over this issue of the... is over the top. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig, appreciate it. Thank you so much. Ellen McLaughlin?
Hello, good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for your service. So I love the movie Groundhog Day. Bill Murray's character wakes up to the same day over and over, until he finally learns you can't change the day, but you can change yourself. Today, Weddington feels stuck in its own Groundhog Day, reliving the same zoning fight again and again. Two years ago, Weddington fought Weddington Green. In January of 2025, we fought this, and here we are again, nine months later, reliving this to change the downtown overlay map. Residents speak up, and they share that commercial expansion is mostly not what they want. But is the council listening? Yes, families have a right to sell their land. But changing the zoning has consequences. Rezoning doesn't stop there at one property. It can create a domino effect. More commercial projects, more traffic, and most importantly, the loss of the small-town character that we all truly treasure. What benefits one family can hurt thousands of others. The property can still be sold, or it can still be used as it was intended. But instead, this is the maximization at the expense of residents. The lesson is clear. Real progress comes when we think about more than ourselves. Let's not repeat this lesson again in January of 2026. It's time for everyone to listen to the many residents of Weddington and help protect us from this endless Groundhog Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Clayton? Clayton Jones?
Colonel Anderson, I want to thank you for your tribute to your friend. And I think you'll agree with me, and I'm a veteran, and there's probably a half a dozen more veterans in this room. And I'd be the first to say that it's one thing to be a veteran, and another thing to be the person who is on the pointy end of the spear. Those are the true heroes. Now, I was proud to serve my country. I was never on that pointy end of the spear. My life was never in danger. And those folks deserve our thanks immensely. So, thank you, Colonel, I appreciate it. Clayton Jones, Van Hennel Circle. Let me address Councilman Perryman's concern about fairness. Now fairness can't be judged... I didn't start my thing. I know you did, but I think you cut me off quick, I think, the last time. Okay, but it can't be judged in a vacuum. The Polifka land was originally zoned residential when Mr. Polifka purchased the land. And I suggest it's fair to assume that the land was a speculation purchase, with the intent to have it zoned commercial. Now, when you buy land on speculation, you're taking a risk. No different than buying shares in the stock market, you're taking a risk. You're betting that the investment is going to grow in value. Nothing wrong with that, that's the American way. Now, when Mr. Polifka purchased the land that was residential and petitioned Weddington to have it rezoned commercial, he originally requested to build five buildings on the property. And I believe that after going through the planning board, the planning board recommended reducing it to three. And eventually, it came before the town council. And then some additional negotiations must have gone on, because in the interest of fairness, a compromise was reached between the town council and Polifka to rezone that land commercial, but to limit it to one building. Now, the town was more than fair when it allowed Polifka to build the existing building. But if Mr. Polifka didn't think that it was fair, back when the former town council said he could build one building, or that he wouldn't be able to make it profitable with just one building, he could have walked away, sold the land, took the loss right up front, and then moved on to another project. But he didn't. So considering the totality of the situation, no one's being unfair to Mr. Polifka. They are not owed an apology by this town council or the previous one. As has been said many times, no good deed goes unpunished. Weddington should not have to regret that they once extended a gracious favor to the Polifkas. Now, former Mayor Horn, Craig Horn, I was going to address a couple things. I hope this council remembers that it wasn't that long ago that I believe this council, when the Matthews Farm up here, that beautiful old historic house, you know, they have Christmas and pumpkins and all that stuff. And they came to you and said, "Look, I can't keep this house in this condition without, you know, having some money, and I just can't do it with a pumpkin and Christmas patch." And he wanted to build a wedding venue. Beautiful rendition of that, there was no objections in the room to that. I remember Colonel Anderson talking about that. No objection. I didn't object to it, I thought it was a wonderful idea to do it. But, I don't think he rezoned it, so I'm guessing it's still commercial. But if a mistake was made, then the mistake was made when that was not put in the overlay. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton, appreciate it. Joyce, Joyce Plann?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. The question of expanding commercial has been debated time and time again. The townspeople spoke overwhelmingly against commercial expansion during Weddington Green. The townspeople spoke again in their election of representatives now sitting on this council, whose platform stood in part for limiting commercial expansion. The townspeople also spoke during a survey in 2018. They spoke most recently in 2023, during the research conducted by Inspire, a consulting company hired by the preceding town council. The towns spent our tax dollars to hire a consulting company to tell them what they had already heard, but were unwilling to accept. The vast majority of town residents do not want additional land zoned for commercial use. I want to remind council of a few specific findings from surveys and consultants. In 2018, residents were asked, "Would you like to see more small-business officer retail development in Weddington?" The answer was no. 62% of respondents, almost two-thirds, said that they did not want more commercial. In 2023, just two years ago, Inspire consultants used multiple methods to determine the desires of the town people. Public meetings were held, and online maps solicited comments. Interactive displays were set up in town hall. The contract with Inspire asked it to create a town center master plan and to consider up to 144 acres as a possible downtown. However, after all of the various community engagement efforts had been concluded, the consultants determined that the townspeople did not want an expanded commercial hub. Rather, they overwhelmingly wanted to keep commercial to the downtown overlay. I quote their report. "The comments that were the most common related to wanting to maintain commercial uses within the existing downtown overlay area." Also from that report, "The online public engagement for this project included a number of questions to gauge the community's priorities and interests. When asked why people chose to live in Weddington, the overwhelming answer was 'community, rural, character.'" Now comes again the question, "Should the downtown overlay be expanded?" Were I in a court of law, I would proclaim firmly, "Objection, asked and answered." There is no need to study this question again. You merely need to listen to what has already been said. And may I make a point about the allegation that this is some kind of mob rule? I just read to you, two-thirds said, "We don't want to expand commercial." The overwhelming majority in the most recent survey said, "We want to keep commercial in the downtown overlay." That is not a mob, that is this group, this is the town speaking. So, and when Ms. Shaw wants to allege that people are being disrespectful, I would like to say, that can go both ways. I find this, mob rule versus rights of citizen, very insulting to me personally. I am not mob rule, I do not run around with a martini glass in my hand. I live in this town, I love this town, I want to protect it. So please do not insult me, and don't claim that my friends are insulting you.
Thank you, Joyce. Chad? Chad Emmerich?
Okay, guys.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, guys.
Good evening, Chad Emmerich, Eagle Road.
Let's hold down the conversation, okay? Okay, guys? Go ahead, Chad.
All right. My comments tonight are in response to objective facts in response to several of the reasons stated the process of changing the overlay. The Perry South property is not in the overlay due to an oversight. This is blatantly incorrect. The overlay was established in 2015, and it stems from surveys and public involvement driving the land use plan in the UDO. The most recent survey showed no change in that sentiment. And just to clarify, that survey was significant. You can look at a sample size calculator and it shows 93% level of confidence with a margin of error plus or minus 5%. In that survey, the consultant stated that a very large area, started with a very large area, including the old Weddington Green site as commercial. The results were clear, no change to the overlay. The land use plan and the downtown plans were presented and adopted to that area. Here's how the process normally works to avoid any confusion. You have a survey, you get public involvement, the planning board reviews it, you have a public hearing, you have public comments. Town council reviews, and they have a vote. There's no way an oversight happens when we've gone through all of this on multiple occasions with no change. In fact, in the land use plan and the UDO, we have goals, and we even have two pages in here that are very specific. It's Section 703(c) in the UDO about rules for the overlay. There's no way that the Perry South property can meet these requirements. It talks about things like connectivity, shared common open space, pedestrian-friendly, and more. Perry South is across the busiest road in Weddington that's mostly full of non-residents driving through. Residents clearly stated, "We don't want any new commercial to be in that quadrant." So what they want is something that's easily accessible and pedestrian-friendly. The other point is, the town was wrong in the vote in January and should have listened to the planning board, and the Polifkas have a right to add more. That's not correct. In North Carolina, councils have a very broad say in commercial development, even more so than residential. It is a risk taken in commercial. The property owner is entitled to a reasonable use of the land, not the best and most profitable use. That reasonable use was established in 2013. It went from the five buildings, three buildings, and the town approved the one. State statutes and legal cases are quite clear here. It wasn't challenged in 2013, nor in January. If it was negligent, I'm sure the town's legal council would know. And the planning board is at advisory and nothing more. There are many times you can see across all municipalities where the council votes in opposite direction of the planning board, both in approvals and denials. The council weighs the land use plan and the voices of the residents that they were elected to represent. Lastly, I would just want to close with reading an email from our previous town planner who was here when the land use plan was updated. This was from September 23, when the Perry South property was listed for sale, including two more pads in the listing. While many emails came to him about uses for those two buildings, he stated, "Our current land use plan does not allow for non-residential development outside of the overlay. This parcel is outside. And a current ongoing update of the plan has found the public sentiment to have not changed and continue to preclude such development." He also states, "I don't believe there is much likelihood of receiving any support for the project from the public, or myself, given the land use plan. In the upcoming elections this November, the makeup of the council will be changing quite possibly to be more unsupportive of the project." If our experienced planner was involved in that whole process, says it shouldn't change, then I'm not sure why we're still discussing it. I also have a petition with over 216 signatures, 122 are confirmed Weddington residents, and I'd like to put my comments in the petition into the record.
Thank you, Chad. Jerry?
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me here tonight. I appreciate your time and appreciate you listening. You know, when I listen to everybody here tonight, and I have a script in front of me, but I just have to take a moment to address a couple things, and I've reached out to the opposition multiple times, never heard back. I think there's a thing in this country that's civil discourse. We should be able to meet in person, talk, or we should be able to be in a public setting like this and talk, and be heard calmly and rationally. Now, when I'm listening to this group, I can't help but think of the movie Forrest Gump. There's a part where he says, "I may not be a smart man, but I know what love is." Well, I may not be a smart man, but I know what math is. Math, arithmetic. People tonight are saying we're against expanding commercial. 0.4% of this town is designated commercial. 0.4% of this town is designated business in the future land use map in the comprehensive plan of 2024. Do you know who's included in that 0.4% that's commercial? Polifka. How are we increasing commercial if we're already commercial? We're already part of that 0.4% in the current map and in the future map. Now, you guys want to talk about facts? Here's a fact right here. Look at the Unified Development Ordinance. What does it say? Clearly states, "The downtown overlay shall apply to those parcels designated as future business in the Town of Weddington Land Use Plan and Zoning Map." What did I just say? Business. What is Polifka? Business. It's pretty simple. I have a lot of reasons that I can say. Historically, it would take me a couple hours to go through it all. I've gone through, over the last couple months, thousands of hours of town council minutes, planning board minutes, videos from 2023, since we submitted our application in 2023. 16 months going through planning board approval process. And Mr. Emmerich says that we respect the process? Well then, if we respect the process, why did our planning board and our town planner approve Polifka to build? And then a month and a half later, you voted it down? And why? And why did our planning board and our town planner say that being part of the overlay should have no bearing on whether we're allowed to build? How does that make sense? Now, there's a vote happening here tonight, and I ask you to do the right thing. Act with integrity. Be somebody. Right? The question is not whether the property deserves consideration. It clearly does. But whether this council will allow its advisory body and professional staff to do their due diligence. Council has a sharp town planner and a planning board made up of people who care and who do their homework. I was at the last planning board meeting in July, and I, again, I've said I've watched a lot of planning board videos, like hundreds of hours worth. They're good. They're not a glorified HOA. They care. The advisory board's role is to evaluate the evidence and provide you with a recommendation grounded in the town's ordinances and plans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry. Can't really read this. I guess it's, is it doctor, starts with a T? Come on up. And just state your name, if you don't mind, so we can have it for the record.
Just a dentist, not a doctor. Just full T, full living. A little bit, a little bit. I'm Andrew Tran. Jared asked me to come by and talk to you guys a little bit. I'm just going to speak from my personal experience about it. I think you guys heard a lot. I didn't know it was going to be this deep and heavy and discussion-wise. I was thinking more lighthearted. But that's okay. I just got off of work. I'll make it fast, and you know, y'all go about it. We've been in business under Mr. Polivka and his building for the last 10 years. I raised a family here. I have a home here. I'm a resident here. I can't say much about it. I've seen Weddington grow. It's a beautiful town. I would love for it to be as it is. All things aside, besides that, I can tell you two things. One, Mr. Polivka loves the heck out of his land, because when I see him out there, he is looking at his landscape all the time. From that's just a personal standpoint. From my standpoint with it, without that building up there, I never would have been able to establish my office from day one. And a lot of my patients are from Weddington. We take care of a lot of residents here. And as far as I know, I can't say openly for everyone, but the patient goes there, they love it, they look out it, and they're like, hey, this is not Waverly. It's not one of those other places. And this is a nice view behind it. And so I've loved being in that practice, and I hope to be in this town, in that building, for another 30 years, if I am still practicing at that point. But that's it. There was a whole, you know, rehearsed stuff that I was supposed to read, but I would love for them to be able to bring in more professionals, such as myself, to take care of the resident in this town, because there's a lot of people that move here. And again, this is just frequently for me. I don't know much about the town, but as a dentist, we can only take care of about 2,500 people. That's one dentist. If I work a little bit harder, maybe 3,000. And I think there's a little bit more than 3,000 resident living in Weddington. And if that says something, maybe I'll have more dentists working with me, and that's fine. But if not that, medical provider would be great. Another physician would be great, because whenever I need something helped on, I got to go all the way up to Waverly or somewhere else, and hopefully they can squeeze me in. That's it. Thank you. You have a good night.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I can't read this one. Is it Christie?
Christie's stuck on.
Oh, so she can't be here? Okay.
Yeah, she can't. Yeah, she, her name is, she's, she's, just landed in Charlotte.
Got you. Okay. All right. Cool. So that's all, that's all we have then, just Christie was last one. Okay? Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Okay? We're going to move forward past the comment section. This is item eight, Presentation of Proclamations for Constitution Week, and let's include Landon. So Ashley, you guys want to come on up and tell us a little about, a little bit about who you guys are?
Thank you, Mayor Bell. My name is Ashley Corizes, and I am the Regent of the Halifax Convention Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and we're here for a Constitution proclamation for Constitution Week, which is every year, September 17th through the 23rd. And I won't spend time telling you about our organization, but I just want to commend you all. I realize I'm not a Weddington town resident, but I see you all, and I know you care deeply about your town. And to see you all in this civic discourse and watching the American way playing out, it is truly inspiring. So thank you. We're all daughters of men and women that supported the American Revolution. And so it is, it is really special to be here today and to see you all. And so I, I will be praying for this town as you resolve the items. But thank you, Mayor Bell, for this constitution. I'd like to call Kitty McGordon and Carol Lee Odie, who are our Constitution Week co-chairs, and our past Regent, Catherine Arno.
And I'm going to get you to stay there when you guys, after you say what you want to, I'm going to read proclamation as well.
We're just delighted to be here.
Okay. Well, okay, why can I go ahead and read your proclamation?
Yes, thank you.
Town of Weddington Proclamation P 2025-03. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated by rule, to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2025, marks the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Jim Bell, by virtue, virtue of authority invested in me as mayor of the Town of Weddington, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness thereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Weddington to be affixed this eighth day of September, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. And Colonel Artie Bissin, thank you for your words. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We would just like a photo with you, Mayor.
Okay. Our next proclamation is Carley here, Carley Oberly, or Susan Harland? Any one of those guys here? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation for, it's Town of Weddington Proclamation P 2025-04. This is for, let's include Landon. Whereas, let's include Landon, founded in 2023, is a nonprofit organization, is to create opportunities to bring children with and without disabilities. Those who are neurodivergent and those with developmental, developmental delays, together to create real bonds and true friendships. Whereas inclusion means children with disabilities are not separate, are not in separate activities nor lead separate lives. Separating people by perceived ability disadvantages everyone. Belonging is a human need. Whereas disability inclusion is mutually beneficial. Children with disabilities will benefit by being just as much a part of their community as their non-disabled peers. Be a peer of a team. Have a best friend. Create true friendships and have a sense of belonging. And non-disabled peers will benefit from learning compassion, patience, respect, kindness, citizenship, and understanding the value of differences in how to successfully work and play with people who are different. Everyone wins when we include. Whereas families in the community pledge to accept, respect, and include people of all abilities, including their neurodivergent peers and peers with developmental delays and disabilities. Whereas inclusion starts with each individual person, and each person pledges to help their community be more inclusive. Whereas every child is valued because of their strengths, gifts, and even challenges. As disability is, as disability is simply diversity. We must trust that every child is an incredible whole person who does not need to be fixed. Now, therefore, I, Jim Bell, Mayor of the Town of Weddington, on behalf of the Weddington Town Council and citizens of Weddington, do hereby proclaim September, 2025, as Disability Inclusion Month in the Town of Weddington. Debbie, I mean, Debbie Orkin will present that later. Okay? Okay? Should we move on? Public safety report. Come on in, Deputy Rinn.
I hate this podium. It's so demasculating. I'm sorry. Every time I go, it's depressing. So you'll have to just bear with me, pun intended. So Mayor, Council, once again, citizens of Weddington, it is always a pleasure. I get a little backlash 98% of the time, because the other deputies always say, "Why don't you just talk about us?" So on behalf of them, thank you. Not only thank you so much for your support, your dedication to our cause, but the continuation of being our foot soldiers. It's not often that we get a chance to actually say, "Hey, what you did was worth it." But today and tonight, I just want to say thank you so much, because it is worth it. So in the month of August compared to July, we answered 65 compared to 61 in July, 911 hangups. So that's going to be testing the line from all the Google fibers and things of that nature. Maybe little Susie got a brand-new iPhone, she's testing it out, doesn't know what's going on, new iWatch, things of that nature. So they went up a little bit. That's also going back to school, and she forgot it was in her bookbag. So accidents, we actually went from 28 to 21. Once again, forgetting that school's starting, forgetting that the school patterns are changing, forgetting that, oh, no, Amanda Drive opened up, now I got to hurry up and beat the traffic. So we, we did increase a little bit on our traffic recs, so we answered 28 compared to 21. Alarms definitely decreased, so people are coming back from their homes and remembering their passcodes. So we went from 44 to 35. So we decreased there. Business checks, we had 93, but we actually increased it to 100, getting out and actually getting out of our cars and checking our businesses, especially at night. We really want to start focusing on getting out, especially at night. So we received some emails and some complaints about, especially from business owners or even residents at night. So we're walking your neighborhood, especially in nature trails at night. So you might see a deputy over there once again, especially at night on your nature trail. So if you see it, and it's just us, please don't be alarmed, we're not chasing anything or anybody. We're stepping up our folk patrols in your neighborhood. So also, careless and reckless, we answered 13. It decreased to eight. So a little bit of that is us actually getting out there and answering the call before it comes out, being a little bit more vigilant. Domestic disturbance since we're at seven, we only answered four in August. So we stepped out. Maybe people went on vacation, they're a little bit happier with their partner. Once again, preventive patrols, that's us being in your neighborhood. That's us saying, "Hey" to the kids. That's us actually getting out into the community. We were at 835, but in August, we stepped it up to 882. So once again, radar patrols, we stepped up a little bit more, too. We normally average in the low 20s, but that's us actually getting out on 16 Beulah Church, Antioch Road, things of that nature. So we hover around the low 20s, we stepped it up to 29. So that includes us looking like we have the hairdryer out the window, things like that. That's going to be another use of our tools that we have. So traffic stops, once again, we did receive the complaint, and we stepped it up. So we're at 184 and 187. So we're, we're averaging into the high 100s there, because we're receiving the complaints, and we're going out there and working it. Continue to let us know. Little Timmy and Susie are out there on their bikes, so we want to protect them, too. Total calls for August, 1,509 compared to 1,538 for July. You're going to hear me continue to reiterate little things every other meeting. One thing I want to hit home is, believe it or not, we do want to start preparing for the holidays. The way that we can do that is be vigilant. I'm really, really wanting to hit one thing home, if you don't mind. Am I still on the timer? I guess. So when you're out and about and you're walking, or that insomniac that's in the middle of the driveway, and you're wondering what she's doing, she's probably looking for that Amazon package that's coming at 4:00 a.m. in the morning. So we received some complaints, especially with the holidays coming up. Please be a little bit vigilant. If you have access to Ring or whatever your home network is, please tap into it and cut them on. Let us know. That'll give us a timestamp. Once again, I think a couple years ago, we talked about if your key has a key fob, sleep with your house, sleep with it next to your actual bedside stand. Keep your spare key next to you. See something you don't like, hit your alarm, especially 4:00 a.m. in the morning, Amazon's delivering when they shouldn't be, things of that nature. I hear a lot of people talk about how proud they are of their castle, their home, their property. Let us do what we can to help you protect it. All right? Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
I want to say thank you for what you guys do, being proactive out there. You know, part of what you guys do is, you know, you're, we're practicing crime prevention here, not, what's the, what am I trying to say? Instead of going in and cleaning up the mess afterwards, you guys are, you know, being out there, being proactive and hopefully preventing major crimes and being, again, practicing prevention. So thank you for what you do.
Oh, no, sir. That's, that's the credit to the citizens and especially the council backing us. There's a lot of different towns in this state that don't get the same privilege as we do to do our job. So on behalf of, especially the Weddington deputies, I know they're going to be watching and commenting whatever I say, but thank you. You don't get to hear it enough from us as well. If you see us or anything of that nature, we're going to throw it right back at you. If you're going to tell us thank you, well, you are, let's us do our job. You let us answer the general statutes and actually get to execute them. So that's how much we appreciate you guys.
And just know each deputy you're watching, we appreciate you and what you do, and, and, and you are appreciated here. So thank you for being a part of Weddington.
Thank you.
Sure. Deputy Rinn, I just want to say, I was talking the other night to one of my neighbors, and they had earlier this year, a, I guess, a faulty alarm called, and y'all came out in the middle of the night, and she just wanted to say how polite and nice and responsive y'all were, even though it was a false alarm in the middle of the night, and she said, told her husband, said, "Please go down there, figure out what's going on down there, because there was the knock on the door in the middle of the night, and it was one of your deputies late at night responding to a, what they had received as a broken window alarm." And their system had failed, they had no idea. And, but she also said she really noted that the cars driving by through the, the street, slowly looking around, you know, being observed. She really appreciated how safe she felt in the neighborhood. So thank you.
I could speak on, on behalf of a couple citizens here in this room right now, Castle Doctrine. So that's why we're polite when we come to your door at 3:00 a.m. in the morning. Yes, at that point, so you're protecting your castle. We get, and just shoot in the same direction we do if that, if that happens. I say that wholeheartedly, but that's probably why they're being so nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Senate agenda. It's, item A is the approval of the last month's August 11th council meeting minutes, and the 25-06 is to condition of Weddington Glen to the state maintained minutes, and the 25-06 is to addition of Weddington Glen to the state maintained code system. Okay? This on the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda stated.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, so it's all approved and we'll move forward. Old Business. This is 11A, it's Old Business, discussion to, and possible consideration of instructing staff to move, to begin downtown overlay, move to look into that and the amendment process. And this has been Jeff's baby, and we, you know, we've heard a lot of comments tonight. And Jeff, I'm just going to let you take off with it.
All right, well, I appreciate that, the moment we've all been waiting for. Well, I've got some prepared comments that I made, and I will be sticking with those, but based on some of the comments that I've heard from the podium, I will definitely be adding a few things here and there, so please bear with me if I seem like I'm going along and then I kind of stop for a second. What I would like to do to begin is to get us all on the same page about what I'm talking about and what I think we all should be talking about. So Greg, if you would throw up that first slide for me, please. This is the current zoning map for the Town of Weddington. Now, you can see a little arrow right there, kind of just to the left of center, and you see those three little purple pieces there? That is our area right over here, okay? On the, and, and so the arrow is pointing at the Polisca property, but I want you to notice all of the other residential area there that's depicted in town. And it's been previously said by a speaker, that little parcel there, all of that little purple commercial area amounts to 0.4% of the total area of this town. If you, and, and so the other day I was driving home, and, you know, I keep thinking that, you know, every time we've had this discussion here, we're just looking at maps, we're looking at, you know, documents. Well, I think it would be beneficial to take a look at what we're talking about. So I went out one afternoon, and Greg, if you'll start the video, I'll try to talk through it. I stood in the parking lot there in front of the grocery store, and I'm here looking down Providence Road, like Charlotte, and let me just start off here. As the camera starts panning around, I'm standing there in the parking lot, you can go ahead and start it. You're going to look, oh, yeah, oh, it's buffering, okay. But there on the right, the wooded area you see is the Hunter Farm, that's the conservation land you heard mentioned earlier tonight, all right? There is Polisca, what they're, they're building right there. The tree line goes around, and you will see there is, that's where the church property starts, where United Methodist, the tree line there, and there's the church. Now you're looking south, now we come, now we're looking at the, the property there where the shopping center is, the Harris Teeter and the little restaurants and stuff like that, the bagel shop. You know, coming on around, there's a nice big parking lot. Now what you don't see is the two lots behind that, that are zoned residential, by the way. There's own residential, and then you can't quite see it because the, the trees are there, but on the other side of that is where the gymnastics center is. All right, if you'll please go to the next slide for me. So what we've just taken a look at is this area right here, okay? I was standing where it's kind of in the B2CD portion. The B1CD is the gymnastics center, the other two little striped areas behind there are residentially zoned lots that are in the downtown overlay that are designated for future, future commercial use. And then the MX part across the street is Polisca. Now, I want to start at this point by saying what I am not asking for tonight. I'm not asking for any changes to be made, we're not going to change any maps, we're not going to change any rules, we're not going to change anything to the UDO or anything else. All I'm asking for is that we're going to start a process. Also, I am not asking to expand commercial property in Weddington. Many of the speakers that came up speaking very emotionally tonight were saying, we don't want any more commercial property here in Weddington. I agree with you. I don't want any more commercially zoned, I don't want to change any more zoning land to commercial. In fact, and I, and based on things that were said a little earlier, I just want to remind everybody that when Weddington Green came up for a vote, does anybody in this room know who made the motion to deny Weddington Green? Do you know who voted with me to deny Weddington Green? The lady sitting at the end of the table, Brandon Howey. And you know who broke the tie to deny Weddington Green? Former Mayor Craig Horn, who's sitting right there. So if, yes, if you've been seeing things on social media saying that I want to expand commercial property, and I want to expand commercial all over this town, and in, and according to one guy's letter to me today, that the town's unique residential and rural feel would be lost forever, and home values would deteriorate, safety of Weddington residents will be at risk, and crime will get even worse, and traffic will get even worse. They don't know what they're talking about. In fact, there's a lady sitting in here that after the Weddington Green vote, came up, shook my hand, and told me she was glad that I did the right thing. And she spoke at that podium earlier this evening, and she did not speak kindly, I guess, of my position, is how I will put it. So if you're wondering why this bothers me, that's why. When I see what's being pumped out in this town regarding this subject, that's where I got off track, I'll try to get back on track here. So what is this about tonight? This is about starting a process, and that process is to start a discussion, a discussion through our existing channels about including the Polisca property in what we designate as our downtown overlay. And if by chance it were to happen, and if you could go back two slides, or no, 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 just, no, leave it on that. If it were to come to pass, the only change that would be made is you see that little black kind of hash line that's around B1, B2, and those two residential properties? It would move right across the street and go right around the MX that's right there to include the Polisca property. That's it, that's all. No changes to any other texts, no changes to any other processes or procedures. All we're doing is moving that line. Why am I bringing this up? Because it's the right thing to do. And I'm sorry, I don't think there's a time limit when somebody has been treated unfairly to say, sorry, we already voted on this once, we're not going to discuss it again. Maybe that's just me. But I believe firmly that the Polisca family was treated unfairly regarding their property rights when the vote was taken in January. Now, let's talk a little background. In this past January, this council voted to deny the Polisca family their request to build two more smaller office buildings at the front of the property, the commercial property, that they already own. The foundation of that denial, the cornerstone of that denial was the fact that it was not inside the depicted downtown overlay. If you don't believe me, go back and look at some of the social media posts that were made after the vote was taken. The intent, and I was on the planning board when it first came up, the intent of this downtown overlay, from the very beginning, was to limit brick and mortar retail commercial to our downtown center. We all know what we don't want. We don't want to look like South Boulevard, we don't want to look like Waverly, we don't even want to look like Wesley Chapel, and I shop over there fairly frequently. We know we don't want that. So that was the intent of creating this overlay, which includes two residential lots. Okay? Now, I don't know why, when the Polisca property was rezoned to MX to allow them to build that one building, that the council at that time didn't make that part of the approval process and say, hey, we're just going to go ahead and move that line and make sure you're, you're included in the, in the overlay. Because it makes sense. I mean, where it is, it's landlocked, it's commercial property, just the same as everything across the street. Now, I've heard somebody say tonight that, well, you know, we don't need to be making changes, you know, the UDO says this, and that's what we need to go by. Well, folks, since the current UDO was approved in 2021, it has been amended 17 times. Changes have been made 17 times to this document. This council, the people you see sitting up here right now, have made 11 of those amendments. So, and I'll give you an example of something that was overlooked. Councilman Smith, when he first got elected, I remember very well, you came in one night and you said, guys, I have found something in the UDO that was overlooked and we need to correct it. The, the floodplain limits were like 20 years, and you said, they're supposed to be at 100, but, but the document that was approved that went through all the right channels said 20. And we said, no, that was an oversight, that was a mistake for the benefit of this town and our future development, we need to correct that. And we did. That was one of those 11. So yes, when we find something that is an oversight, we as elected officials have an obligation to correct it. I believe what we should discuss, begin the discussion about mending, amending the downtown overlay for the following reasons. The property in question is in the town center. It's not down Beulah Church, it's not over near the high school, it's right there. You saw, you saw the video where I stood out there. Number two, it is already zoned commercial. There is no rezoning. Why do people keep saying that? People here tonight stood at that podium and said, you're going, I'm opposed to rezoning. There's no rezoning to commercial on that piece of property. The only rezoning that could possibly be talked about are the two residential lots that are in the, the overlay right now. And thirdly, the property is landlocked. I've heard that as a concern. It's going to spread, if you do this, my gosh, it is going to go up and down the, you know, Providence Road. It's bounded on two sides by conservation property, it's bounded on the third by a church that's been there, what, over 100 years? Done whole water, folks, sorry. I maintain that not being included in this overlay was an oversight, and for the last 12 years, that that property has been de facto a part of the downtown overlay, by what it is, by what it's zoned, and what it's being used for. Now, by using the current, this current parcel to deny the Polisca family's request for full use of their property, and, and I'm sorry, I've got to talk about this, about that the government did, or we did, a gracious favor to the Polisca family when we graciously approved what they, you know, proposed. I'm sorry, I don't think the government should be in the business of doing gracious favors. We do what is right, we should do what is logical, we should do what follows the law. But they have been, they were denied a fundamental principle. I don't care whether you own a house, or you own a business, or whatever else you've got, you have the right within the legal limits of the law to do on your property what the law says you can do, period. It shouldn't be up to your neighbor or your neighbors to say, we don't think you should do that because we don't like it, we think it's a bad idea, we think it could lead to this, 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 and this. Okay? They have been paying commercial taxes on that property for the last 12 years. So yes, they have every right to have a, a proposal judged on its merits and not summarily refused because they're on the other side of four lanes of traffic. Now, at our July meeting, when I mentioned, and I said I was going to be bringing this up, I said that I'll be having a meeting at Town Hall, and I invited anybody that wanted to come out and talk to me about it, and understand where I was coming from, I want to hear your side, you tell me yours. 11 people showed up. Three of those from the planning board, and I do want to thank the planning board for showing up because it was a very good conversation. 11 people. And we had a great discussion. Some things were brought up that I hadn't thought about, and that's the very reason I think we need to start this discussion. But it's funny to me that a lot of the same people that I see writing letters and standing up here haven't reached out to me, haven't said, Jeff, I think you're wrong, I'd like to get together and tell you why I think you're wrong. I wonder why that is. I don't know, maybe it's because everybody that I've had a chance to actually sit down to show them the maps, talk about the facts, nobody has told me that my facts are wrong. Nobody has told me that my reasoning is wrong. It's all this other peripheral stuff, oh, it's the Pandora's Box, if you do this, this is going to happen, uh, you know, da, 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 da. We, we talked about this, and majority of the people in town said they don't want it. Well, let me talk about that for a second, since it's been brought up at the podium. Yes, we paid a company a great deal of money to update our land use plan, which is a plan, it's not an ordinance, by the way, and there's a reason for that. But when they did, if you look at the number of people who actually responded, at best, being as, as generous as you can with the responses that were received, 3.3% of the voting eligible people here in town, and that's based on the 2020 census, so there were probably more than that when it was done, responded. Now, to put that in perspective, that is 33 out of 1,000. So I ask you, not that, and I will say this, those 33 people, their opinions are valid, they should be listened to, they should be taken into consideration. But if you're sitting in the dock, if it's you behind the desk, and I said, well, Jeff, yeah, we sent out a thousand surveys to see what we need to do with you, 33 people bothered to tell us, and we're going to base what we're going to do on those 33, and even though 33 didn't all agree, I wonder what the other 967 people would think. So, like I said, nobody so far has said that my facts are wrong or that my reasoning is wrong based on the map, based on the intent of the overlay, based on what they've been doing there for the last 12 years. Also, no one has been able to explain to me so far the obvious contradictions and irony that opponents to this are using in their arguments. Number one, it would expand commercial. Talked about it already, no, the commercial, the Polisca property is already zoned commercial, just like the shopping- shopping center, just like the gymnastics center. If you don't believe me, you can do what I did to make sure I had it right, because I called the Union County Tax Office. I got their phone number right here if you want it. If you call it, a very nice lady named Lynn will answer, and all you need to ask her is to look in the tax records and see what the county says the tax zoning classification is for those three pieces of property. And guess what? Union County says they're all the same. They are all commercial. Next, there are people in town who are saying and posting on social media, and I quote, limit commercial growth to the area already zoned commercial. This is very similar to what other people were saying about two years ago, and I quote, restrict commercial development to the area currently zoned commercial. I couldn't agree more. Finally, it's been stated that we should not be changing the current overlay, but it also contains two residential properties. Was that an oversight? Are we gonna change that? What type of Orwellian double thing does it take to reconcile those three statements? I don't know. Finally, I'm gonna finish by saying this. I strongly believe, I firmly believe, that everybody wants to be treated fairly. I don't care whether you're at work, at home, or most importantly, by your government officials, whether you own a home in Weddington or you own a business. When you come before a government, you should not, with a request to do something, you should not have to start with a no and then earn a yes. The benefit of the doubt, if everything else is about equal, should always go to the citizen and not the government. What I am requesting tonight is that we start a conversation, that we start the process. The Polisca family deserves that from this town. And if you think otherwise, ask yourself, if you were on the other side of the fence, if you were on the other side of the table, how would you want to be treated? And at this point, and I do apologize for going longer than expected, but again, some of the comments up there, I just cannot go without making a few comments. Fellow council members have any comments or questions for me? Then yes.
So, I'm irritated that for sixty days we've been, you know, the vote in January was the vote in January. They can reapply a year later. I talked over the last sixty days to several members of the planning board, and the reason, which you and I discussed this as well, that the, and we didn't have answers, and so I found answers for the planning board members, that the residential was included because it's an overlay, and the overlay was not and shouldn't have included and purposefully did not include the property that we're talking about, the Polisca property, because it's not pedestrian friendly, and it can never be pedestrian friendly because it's over four lanes of traffic. So for that reason, I feel like this is a mute point, and that it shouldn't have, no one ever wanted it to be included in the overlay, except for, you know, when you brought up that side of it, which, so, I'm just, that's where I stand on it. I'm just kind of beside myself that we're talking about two different things here, and it, like, the planning board even advised, do not include this in the overlay because it can't be pedestrian friendly.
Okay, when did that come before council? Where they said, in other words, when is any planning board come before this council and said, well, we don't think that piece of property should ever be included in the overlay?
They told me that on the phone.
They, okay. Well, when I had, when those three members, it was, Mr. Dieter was there, the chairman, um, help me out here.
But we've never discussed overlay.
But I'm saying, you said, you said you spoke.
I did.
Okay. I spoke to three of them when they came out here and we talked, and none of them's made an objection. Their objection was going, they said, Jeff, we really need to go back and look and see if there was anything when it was originally approved, if there was any language included that precluded them from doing anything else. That was what those three planning board members told me.
Because you asked, why is the residential included in an overlay? That is why, because it's, it was always, like, anyway.
Do you not see a contradiction in that, when somebody?
We're talking about two different things.
When somebody says, when somebody says, we need to restrict commercial growth and commercial development onto land that's already zoned commercial, and look at that map, you don't see a contradiction?
The overlay, though, is not commercial growth. The overlay is what they're recommending to be the.
Thank you. It's a recommendation. Thank you.
The center of the community that is pedestrian friendly, Jeff, and that's why that was excluded purposefully.
Then, then if that was as big a danger, then why were they ever permitted to build over there? Why did they allow that to happen?
I don't know. I wasn't even.
There's a, well, I was.
Okay, then why?
There was a sidewalk that runs right up there at the intersection, that there's a perfectly safe pedestrian crossing that can be used.
It's never gonna happen.
And I doubt, I doubt that, I think, I don't know if the deputy's still here, I don't know how many jaywalkers they've ever caught going from that property over to the shopping center. Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion.
Oh, no.
No, we, because after a motion, there is discussion.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Make a motion to instruct staff to begin downtown overlay amendment process.
Thank you.
Now you can have discussion.
Okay. Is there anything you want to say before I say?
I just wanted to get this to the discussion phase.
Okay. I want to say, Jeff, you mentioned in, since 2021, there's been seventeen amendments or changes to the UDO, and eleven by this council. I consider that a compliment. So I think this council for doing it, because when we came in, I came into office, my goal was to tighten up things. This town, I wanted, I wanted to put the guardrails back up on Weddington, and that's been my goal, is to tighten up this town from development that has come into town and sort of told us what they're gonna do, instead of us telling them what you are going to do or what you can do. They've been telling us for so long, this is what we're gonna do, and we just sort of roll over. So my goal was to change that, and we've done a great stride in doing that, and we have more work to do. So, so what I'm, where I'm going with this is, you know the character of this town, and I know you've been, your argument is for that. Weddington is not a commercial town, even though we have the overlay here. We are a higher scale, higher end residential community. When you go back to the survey that was done in 2018, and it was already mentioned tonight, would you like to see more small business, office, or retail development in Weddington? Of the nine hundred and twenty, not the nine seventeen or wherever you're on, thirty-three people, of the nine hundred and twenty answers to the question, sixty-two percent, and this has already been spoken tonight, sixty-two percent said no. So it's not a small group, and someone mentioned mob rule or whatever, it's not. Sixty-two percent of the nine hundred and twenty said no. I will say this, as elected officials, we have, we have a responsibility to, I'm gonna use the term, we're hired. We're hired to follow the will of the residents who put us here. And, and so if I'm hired to do a job and say, my boss says, I want you to do this, I'm gonna do what my boss says, or he's gonna fire me next time, and rightfully so. So my, my goal has been to follow the will of the residents. For three months, we have been blown up with emails saying, don't want it, don't, you know. I have gotten two emails of all the emails that we got, and you guys were copied on this stuffs. Some of them you weren't, a lot of them were directed to me, and I assume individually to you guys as well, saying, we don't want it, here's why we visiting this again, what are you guys up to? We're not up to anything, but what, what I'm saying is, do you know how many I got saying, I want it? Two. Jared and you. I didn't get a massive number of people saying, throw it in there, build it up, blow it up, you know, and add more to it. I did not see that. The residents spoke to me and said, we don't want it. All right? So I am the employee following my boss. Okay? That's the way I see it. We have a right, I feel, to do, to, I say protect our town, the character and what this town is, and, and so, so to say, you know, oh, it's not fair, well, you know, it, we're not talking fairness here. The Polisca's knew when they, they requested five buildings in 2012, correct?
Yeah.
All right? Came back, they, then they came back and said, we, you know, give us three. Didn't get that. Give us one. So they sort of knew what they were playing with back then. So again, they could have said, eh, we know what we're facing here, we don't, we don't want to, you know, let's just, hey, we'll sell it to somebody else, or we'll build something else, and we can go someplace else. So I don't buy the thing of what's fair. They sort of knew when they were buying, when they were buying, when they were building, what they were getting into. All right? So even in the, even in state law, state, North Carolina state law and statutes, a landowner is entitled to a reasonable use of their land, not the most profitable and valuable use. So I feel that's a reasonable use of that land.
So you're telling me you know what the reasonable use is for that, for property that you don't own, that you're not running?
I can say what, what I've said, all, all what I just said. I feel it is a reasonable use of that land. This town has spoken. I'm following the will of the town. We have a responsibility to protect the town and to protect the will of the residents. All right? Now, I understand there's probably some out there says, oh, you know, hey, we would like to see commercial all the way down the highway. That's not Weddington. Never will be. I don't think it will.
And that's not what we're talking about here.
No, exactly. But I've had, since I've been elected, I've had two developers, let me finish, finish here, I've had two developers come to me, and they want to expand the overlay. We want commercial growth, we think this would be good for Weddington, and, and I think, you know, you guys would love what we would do for you. Two, two different ones. Can we expand the overlay? So I said, I said, look, here's how, here's the town, you can, you can try whatever, because, you know, we can't say no, you know, that's, you know, we legally have to let them pursue if they want to. And that's correct, from our attorney, we was told, we can't just say no, you can't do it. But I've told him, here's the reality of what you're looking at. And this is the character of Weddington, and this is what the will of the residents want. So, so two, so, so I've had this two times. If we keep extending the overlay for every person that comes through, we might as well just say, hey, this is make it all overlay and just see what happens.
Well, the fallacy in that, Mayor, is the fact that you're saying if this is done once, it has to be done again, and that is not true. This town was founded in, what's on the thing here, 1983. I don't see any McDonald's up and down the road. I don't see any Super Walmarts. Everybody who sat in these seats has done an excellent job, up to your point, maintaining the character of this town and being fair to everybody. And you know, in my book, being fair to everybody means not just being fair to the people that voted for you and elected you, but sometimes being fair to an individual, because individuals have rights too. And yes, you know, and to your point that you've been approached, I guess it was about five years ago, we were told by the town attorney that Union County Board of Economics had sent us a message, and they said, hey, we've been approached by a major grocery chain, national grocery chain, that wants to build down here at the corner of Ray and Providence, on that, what is it, sixty-some, forty-some acres is down there? This is a high-end grocery chain, it would have mixed use, it would have, you know, town homes, it would be, oh, it would be beautiful, just like you said, they're, oh, they're painting a picture. And just to your point, and you said, well, do you think your council would be interested in doing that? We just wanted to. And me included, all of us said no, because that does not fit the character of the town. That is not what the people here want. We know that, and we said no. About two weeks later, town attorney comes back to us and says, oh, we heard back from the board, and they wanted to know if you'd even, might want to reconsider, because they just wanted you to know that, that deannexation is always an option. And guess what? Me and everybody else said no. I fail to see, folks, why denying this family, who has been here twelve years, the option of asking for, not, I'm not saying approving it, but asking for the use of half the property that they're paying taxes on. Call me old-fashioned, but if I'm paying taxes on a piece of property, I kind of think I have a right to be able to ask. And what happened in January was despite what the planning board said and voted to approve, despite what our town planner said, that, yeah, it meets our codes and ordinances and laws, this group said, no, it's on the other side of the street, and we're not gonna let it stops here. And, and if, and again, Mayor, you said, hey, I wanted to come in and I wanted to clean things up, then why are those two residential properties still in the overlay? Why haven't, we made a motion, why haven't we amended?
Okay, Jeff, I support you. Like, I think you are right. I think that you are right, that residents are fighting over the wrong thing, but I think that you are wrong understanding what the overlay was meant to be, and there should be no more discussion because it was meant to be pedestrian friendly. Whether or not they're in the overlay doesn't make it yes or no. Like, clearly you can have different zoning within an overlay, residential's in there, that's because it's pedestrian. They're commercial already, so y'all stop this talk about expanding commercial. This is about the overlay today, and the planning board said it is to be pedestrian friendly, which I did not understand prior. And so now that we've all researched this at nauseam, the, I mean, that is why it's not in the overlay. That's why the residential is, but I do understand, like, I support you and I feel for you, that the town is fighting with you over the wrong things, like, it's not even what we're discussing tonight.
I just want to make one clarification. He talks about two residential properties. One of them is the park site.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So if it's gonna be changed into a park, it's gotta be rezoned to that proper thing. And I believe that's also a site. How many inquiries have we had on that property, that instead of doing a park to turn it into commercial development?
Numerous.
Numerous, numerous. So I wouldn't call that a residential property. It is a potential park site owned by the city. Now, the adjacent property is residential. I'd stop there.
Well, let me say this. I appreciate everybody's patience. I feel very strongly about this, folks, because I feel like a citizen, a family is being denied their property rights, and I'm, and I'm very passionate about it, yes. And I have no idea why it has turned into what it has turned into, but we've all done our research, you've been very patient with me, let me make my points. So in the interest of time, if you would like to go ahead and call for the vote, let's just call for the vote and press on.
Well, I want to say two things, and we can do that. We've had a couple of people talk about integrity tonight, and, 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 and you're a person of integrity, correct? And I think you are. When I ran for this office, I ran on promoting, you know, large lots, you know, all those things, and limiting commercial growth. Okay? I am, I am a person of my word, and I'm not one to be elected and changed, it's like, no, I, you know, I've changed my mind, or, you know, I flip-flop like a lot of people have done or do. Say you're gonna do something, you do it, hell or high water. And, and so I am a person of integrity, and that's what I ran on. That was one of my primary platforms. So where I'm going with this is, I don't feel, again, what I said earlier in representing the residents, that I would be doing justice by doing this. But, okay, so with that being said, I'm gonna say this, going back to the safety. UDO, page two, five B, says, any proposed development site planned must create pedestrian stubs to connect with any or all adjacent parcels. U D O, page two, five B, says, any proposed development site planned must create pedestrian stubs to connect with any or all adjacent parcels, also known in the downtown overlay district. There's no way, I mean, you talk about crossing, that there'll be a lot of Frogger coming across the road over there, trying to, you know, get across from over there to over here. You know, you gotta, you know, cross your fingers and hope I don't get hit by five cars. And so I I I wouldn't do that, I don't expect anybody would do that. And so, um, and then it says also on page two, five C, uh, any proposed development site planned must include clearly identifiable crosswalks to allow pedestrians to safely cross parking lots and uh and streets. So where I'm going with this, I don't see that that would ever constitute being in the overlay, just for what our U D O says. And and so, you know, yeah, it's M X, and the this this side over here is is, uh, as as you've printed out, is uh, is B one and B two. So I I I can't go along with making, expanding the downtown overlay. If we do this, the next person down the road will come in and say, well, you did it for these guys, and and the Pelifkas are great folks. I I assume they are, they're great folks, I don't have a problem with them. We're looking, we're not looking at their character, we're looking at the the what fits for the town and what works for Weddington.
Well, the reality is that that building with a lot more people in it has been there twelve years. And as I said, there's already a crosswalk that's functional, that works up there by the church that I know is being used. And I don't think we've had any reports of pedestrians being struck, or anybody jaywalking and playing Frogger going across the street. But like I said, we're we're all where we're at, I get it. I'm I'm a lone voice here, and uh, but but I have to say the things I'm saying because they're important.
And I'll say this.
And that's, you know.
I've seen jaywalking, Nancy Anderson, not knocking her, her farm sits right across the street. So she was over here doing business, and so she was doing the Frogger thing one day, and I said, Nancy, you want me to drive you up? No, I I can get across, I just have to wait in the meeting for a little bit. I said, I'll take you across, just jump in the truck.
Mayor, I respectfully ask that we go ahead and call for the vote and put this to bed.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay.
Motion's been made, will you restate it, please, Tom?
The motion is to instruct staff to begin downtown overlay amendment process work.
Can I, I I I'll ask you, I can I get a vote in favor of asking the staff to move forward on this? Okay, so we have one vote to move forward. Meaning we have two here that would, well, we said earlier.
The the motion is an affirmative to ask the staff to move forward. We have one vote in favor, and if if your majority is against, then the motion fails.
That's where I was going. So the motion fails.
Not yet.
Now, we have to vote, we have to ask the the other people to.
Okay, all right, I'll 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 against this motion of asking the staff to move forward, raise your hands. And it's two. So the motion fails. So this is, this has been put to bed, okay?
It's been put to bed.
And so we're not going to move forward, the staff is not to move forward on this and take any effort or spend any time on moving forward on this subject. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, anything else legal that we need to do with this? Okay. Okay, so the motion, again, fails, okay? All right, so by ending that subject, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. New business and possible discussion and possible consideration of speed limit ordinance for Weddington Matthews Road. Back at the, uh, I'll bring us back at the, uh, we had a retreat. We brought up, uh, four, and I'm going to ask, can I ask Karen to, would you rather introduce this?
Whatever you would like, mayor.
Okay, go ahead and introduce this, and you can fill us in from how it came up.
At the, I feel like this is so far away. At the twenty twenty-five work session retreat, town council directed staff to research reducing speed limits to thirty-five mile per miles per hour at four spots throughout town. Um, the first was on Providence Road from the Mecklenburg County line south to the beginning of the thirty-five mile an hour zone. Second was Providence Road from the railroad intersection north to where the thirty-five mile per hour zone begins, on Weddington Matthews Road approaching the roundabout at Highway eighty-four, and on Deal Road from Highway eighty-four to Twelve Mile Creek Road. When I staff spoke to John Springer, the Assistant D O N C D O T Division Traffic Engineer, and he conducted a field study, a field evaluation for speed on the areas, and reported that N C D O T bases roadway speeds and speed limits on roadway characteristics. In order to change the speed limits, a substantial change in roadway characteristics or use would be needed. For Providence Road and Deal Road, there is not a substantial change to the roadways to warrant speed limit changes. The Weddington Matthews Road segment would be able to match the thirty-five mile per hour transition zone as approaching the roundabout, because it was never changed when the roundabout was put in. So to change the speed limit in that section on Weddington Matthews Road, the forty-five mile per hour limit needs to be repealed, and that's ordinance twenty twenty-five oh seven. And the thirty-five mile per hour speed limit needs to be enacted, and that's ordinance twenty twenty-five oh eight. And also in ordinance twenty twenty-five oh eight, it enacts the forty-five mile per hour speed limit beyond the the thirty-five mile per hour zone. So those ordinances are in your packet, and.
For the public, where is the break?
The break is at Tomato Vine Lane Court, I let me look at it. So from the, thank you, so that's from the roundabout to Tomato Vine, it's right past the curve lane, and then, um, that'll be thirty-five, and then from that point to through the Tillie Morris Roundabout, but I think it's, it's, he said, all the way to Antioch Church, it will be forty-five, but I believe it goes back down to thirty-five up there, but that's not, it's already there. I'm not worried about that, this is all I wanted.
Yeah, and 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 the reason we were looking at changing right here is because if we do something over here, people need to slow down, especially, and and really, if nothing ever happens here, you're you've got a forty-five mile an hour speed coming up to this roundabout right here. And that that was one of the reasons we we talked about, you know, putting this at thirty-five, which I think it was oversight probably.
Well, also, we have several, three homes going in right there, too.
That's true.
Which makes it a lot more residential than it has been when there was really nothing along, especially, I guess, the east side of the road. So with with more homes coming in, and the roundabout being there, it makes good sense.
Yeah, so, um, as far as municipal declaration to repeal speed limit zero twenty twenty-five oh seven, uh, this is to repeal the forty-five. Now, now, I've got to repeal the forty-five before we can vote for the thirty-five. Um, so can I get a, I guess, a motion to repeal?
I'm making a motion to repeal forty-five on Matthews-Weddington Road up to whatever. What, you got to do the whole road, or you do up to?
It's all in the ordinance, so if you just make the motion to approve the ordinance, that'll be okay.
Okay, so we don't have to.
The motion to approve ordinance zero dash two twenty twenty-five, that's your second.
I make the motion to do that.
Well.
That's all we need to do. That's the first.
Yeah, and that's that's what we were doing.
That's the repeal.
Yeah.
Call the vote.
Yeah, no, can I get a vote on repealing of uh, that ordinance? Yeah, all in favor? I think it's unanimous, okay, all right, and that's where I was heading with that. So now we're going to vote for, we're going to enact the 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 speed limit change. Can I get a uh, a vote or a motion to uh, to enact? Municipal declaration enact to enact speed limits, uh, zero twenty twenty-five oh eight.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, okay, it's unanimous, so we enacted that. Okay, council, does there's anything else we need to do pertaining to that? Okay, so, um, we've moved forward. Now, a- a- again, this is one of the, I think, Jeff, you you want to talk about this, so let's hear one with this if you don't mind.
This is hopefully very simple, and I do hope in the future that it's going to be beneficial with folks sitting in these seats. I know there are many times that when a subject comes up, uh, you know, either one in one of our meetings or whatever, that there'll be a lot of questions bouncing around that that any one of us as an individual may have that information that we'd like to get out. And in an effort to make it simpler for the folks sitting here, I did ask our town attorney about this. I said, would it be okay if we, as part of our town webpage, if you were a sitting member here on the council, that you were given a, um, a, what do you call, a site, a a a page to where you as District One Rep, Two Rep, Three Rep, Four Rep, the mayor, that if there's something that you want to, it, you know, kind of expound on and say, hey, I know this question's been asked, that you've got a place to go do that, because right now we don't. In other words, there was something that came up earlier that I said, hey, I'd like to, you know, I've researched something, I'd like to put it on the webpage, and and Karen said, no, you can't, you can't do that, because then you're using the town's resources for a personal type thing. And so, a- and and if we want to make it so that it doesn't become effective till after the election, January one, when everybody's, you know, in their seats, that's fine with me. But I do think it would be helpful to, you know, future council members to have a place where if something has come up, if there's a lot of email traffic on something, that you as an individual rep can go to and and can expound on it and say, hey, you know, th- this are my thoughts on it, and go into maybe more detail, you could.
Sounds like your personal lot plate.
Sort of, I mean, again, I'm not as well-versed on a lot of that as some folks are, but but based on my experience earlier uh, in trying to get something posted, where a question had come up and I was told, no, because you don't have a designated spot on the webpage to do that. That's why I would hope the council would consider establishing that for each of the positions, so you do have a place to do that, or or, you know, post things that you would would want to talk about.
I'm a bit hesitant to do this.
Yeah, who polices that?
That's not even that.
Well, again.
But the the point is, we all get to make council comments at every meeting. And if we're getting inundated with a question on a certain topic, we can give an answer at that time, and it's public record, and it's, you know, it's done with the public, so I I I'm just hesitant to do this, I'll just leave it at that. I think there's, there is an appropriate place to do it, and it's here.
Darcy, do you want to expand on what you just said?
No.
Brandon, do you have anything? Okay, my my only question is, what if, you know, there, down the road, a council member or mayor, whoever, uh, if you get into like, vote for me, I've been doing this, now now you're into campaigning on this site.
And that would be, that would be, again, we would have a policy about what could and could not be posted.
Your mic on?
We would have a policy about what could and could not be posted, and any campaigning or any, that would be illegal. That would be an illegal use of town resources, and so there would be strict rules about that. I think the idea would be, um, facts or follow-up to questions or what have you during a, um, that might come up during a meeting or through social media. That's.
I'm scared that could be conflicted, though, in that somebody, people think that making a position statement as a answer to a question could be deemed political. And I have real issue with that.
Yeah, that's a valid concern.
Also, like, I'm medical, so if I put my opinion or facts on there as I see them, someone's going to dislike, there's another medical person that's not going to see it that way. I just don't, if somebody can give me an example, maybe I'll understand better, but I'm not understanding this right now.
I'm just a can of worms, I'm.
Do you, like, do you, like, what were you trying to get?
I'm just saying that, that instead of like, you know, if you get fifteen emails or ten emails on one subject, and we only meet once a month.
Yeah.
And you feel like, hey, you know, we need, we need, people are looking for an answer before we meet again. At least you would have a spot to go, and we could tell the public, say, hey, if you're right, you asked a question, if you asked a specific question of, you know, whatever, it it would just provide a place for that to be done. I'm not, like I said, it it just came up. If we don't want to do it, that's fine, but but it it, I thought it would just give the people in the seats here a valid place to post informational things without violating the the policy, you know, so, but again, then i- if we don't do it, we don't do it, that's fine.
Do you have other towns that have designated space on their pages for representatives?
It's usually just the, like, a mayor's newsletter, and it's very factual about events coming up, um, what that meetings are, commenting on a event that happens, so they're usually just very factual, um, and it's one, it's like the mayor's corner, kind of, some something along those lines. But I do not have any of my towns that have individual pages for each commissioner.
Are you familiar with policy?
Yes, correct.
We're starting back in.
Are you familiar with like a a policy, like a a policy that another municipality may have that we could use as a baseline?
I could, I could, I would look for one for certain, if if y'all are interested, I could look to see if I can find a policy on this. Uh, you know, again, there's a completely valid concern about misusing government assets for personal gain. And so it's a valid concern, we would have to work very hard to make sure that didn't happen.
I do have some hesitation in terms of, like, if there's no, uh, like, example, or, you know, just starting from infancy, we we are a fourteen thousand person town, not, you know.
Like I said, I I just wanted to bring it up for discussion to see if there's any interest in it.
No, I understand where you're coming from, I just, having made seventeen amendments to our U D O, it feels just like an uncertain that that at the first swing, we would get the policy just right, and you could get a lot of things out there that you, that shouldn't be out there. You know, with a, an evolving policy that has no precedence. I think that's what I think.
We can, we can let it go and just let it stay where it is.
Say there's no motion?
No, no motion and move on.
Just just move on?
Yep.
And 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 I'll say this, Jeff, if you feel strongly about it or have some other ideas, come back next month and say, hey, really, you know, well, here's what we need to do.
Oh, I think I'm about doing my strongly felt idea.
Okay, all right. Code enforcement, we're moving on, code enforcement.
Works in your packets?
Great.
Do you have any questions?
No, uh.
No, ma'am.
I I saw the uh, the one up there on the corner of uh, Fielder Church and Weddington Matthews Road. Uh, that was, that was taken care of, it was all grown up, and finally they cut that, and it's part of uh, Weddington Glen.
Yep.
So so will that be taken care of from now on? It's not just a once and done, it's like.
We'll see.
It's been several times that's happened, correct? I remember it's grown up a number of times.
I've only received one complaint on it.
Yeah.
And I've seen it's grown up several times.
Okay. Well, nobody complained about it, so.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, it's part of the neighborhood, it's part of that, you know, of their.
They have, I believe they have, the builder has not turned over the HOA yet, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, it it needs to stay cut, it represents the neighborhood, and if it grows up like that, and the the weeds were higher than the shrubbery, and it was just getting lost in there, so if we can just keep a watch on that, it'd be awesome. Uh, any, uh, any other concerns? Questions, okay?
Just keep us posted on some of those, especially that unbuildable, that's going to have to be cleaned up at some expense.
I just hate the idea of spending that much money for it.
Goals, goals.
Anyway.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, cool, all right, finance officer, I see Lizzie's not here.
She's not here, but she passed along her report. She said the monthly financials are in your packets, and they include the June thirtieth quarterly grant summaries. Tax bills were sent out and payments are already being received. The final appraised value we received from the county was approximately three hundred million, or six percent higher than the estimate they provided us in April. And this equates to about one hundred thousand dollars more in ad valorem revenues than originally budgeted. This potential budget adjustment is not reflected in the current monthly statements, and that's what she wanted me to share.
Okay.
So is the tax rate set, so we're, it's it's set, so.
All right.
You don't know what that percentage increase ended up being, that she included that number. I know the number, total increase was bigger than estimated, but was the final percentage, or ask her.
Oh, the the total.
Yeah, it ended up, because I know it was supposed to be fifty percent or something like that.
I I I know she has it, but we can get it.
Be good to have for the next one. Be good to have for the next one.
Okay.
Okay. Um, anything else to add to that?
I do not.
Yeah, okay. Updates from the town planner, town administrator?
It was a quiet month for the planning board. I have nothing to add today.
Okay. Um, Karen, anything from you?
Um, I have nothing to add today.
Okay, all right. Uh, I know it's getting later, I'm just gonna add just, uh, for the transportation report, uh, just a little FYI, I, I shared this with the, uh, the folks at, uh, my town hall meeting, meet with the mayor. Um, just a, a little, uh, just a little bit, tad bit of information. Um, North Carolina Turnpike Authority has, uh, informed me that, uh, 485 down through Pineville and down through here, um, it will be open before the end of the year, or by the end of the year, hopefully before the end of the year. Uh, because it's a state project, it's not a private project, um, they're gonna control the tolls. They're already predicting that it's gonna be one of the most successful, being, meaning successful, used toll areas probably in the state, because their goal is to keep the prices down. Uh, at the last CRPTO meeting, uh, I was told that, uh, that they have been given the directive to start coming up with the tolls, uh, figure out that pricing, and the only thing is keeping them, it, I, I think it's pretty much done, the roadwork is done, they're putting in the electronics now, as you, you're starting to see that up there, you know, the, all the toll stuff, sensing stuff. So they're, they're installing that, that's the only thing they're waiting on, is get the electronics installed, uh, and I think there's some marking areas in it. Yeah, uh, that they need to do, but other than that, uh, pricing and electronics are the big two, two items they're working on, so by the end of the year, uh, that, that'll be done. And like, uh, over the brace, uh, July, I asked the questions, is that gonna open, when's that gonna open, that, that on, off ramp? It's going, they're gonna open it all at the same time. It's gonna be one hoopla at one, at one time, yeah, doing that together. Uh, just a, uh, a, a side note here, um, people have asked me about this, I mentioned this, too. Uh, it's, it's not us, but I'm just gonna let you know about it. Uh, on 485 again, uh, going into, uh, Matthews, John Street, they're widening that, that's been discontinued. Uh, so, uh, there was a thousand people crossing that intersection on the weekend, uh, way too many people would be crossing a four-lane highway like Frogger up here. And so they decided that, uh, it's too many people on, on a weekend for that busy downtown of Matthews. The fault was gonna start out at $25 million to widen from 485 through Matthews and connect the four lanes, uh, turned into 44 or 45 million dollars. So the price jumped way because Matthews said, do this over here first, do that over here first, do this last, and the price kept going up. So it priced them out, they gave them money. We approved at the CRPTO meeting to approve giving that, assigning that money to another project in, in Monroe. So anyway, uh, just a little FYI on, on a side note there. Just, uh, another side note is that, uh, the widening of 77 South from downtown to the state line past Carolins, uh, we're looking for bids. Uh, we've required, we've required an, uh, when the north part was bidded on, there was one bidder, and so we all feel we got gouged, and, and we're, we're paying the price for those high tolls. So we've been very direct that we're not making the same mistakes that we did last time, and, uh, we want at least three bids, three different companies to bid on that project. Uh, they've gotten a project down, they estimate about three for 11 miles, 3.2 billion dollars for 11 miles. Uh, it's the most expensive project the state of North Carolina has ever done, and, uh, and the state can't fund it. The state only will max out at $600 million for a particular project, and this is gonna be 3.2, start out at 4.2 billion. Uh, so we've told, uh, D O T to get at least three bids, and so they're shopping bids now for that project. So it'll take about 10 years to finish it once it's started, and it'd be a mess. So they have to rebuild every bridge all the way from downtown to South, uh, to South Carolina State Line, and I don't know what they'll do with 77 and all that mess right there. So anyway, just a throw that out there, that's coming, so. Uh, so all I have to say about, uh, transportation, uh, any, uh, council comments as we start to end this? No, no comment?
Ladies first, yep.
Oh, sure. As always, um, thank you so much to town staff, uh, and the way you support us and help, um, not just the council, but the citizens, and thank you to everyone who came out tonight to participate.
Um, yeah, so thanks to the committees, we cannot get near as much done without our subcommittees. I appreciate you. Um, and then just a reminder that, you know, we all have different opinions, and it doesn't mean anyone is right or wrong, so just take it easy on people that you disagree with, it's okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, everybody who came out tonight and stayed through the grueling meeting that we had. Thanks, staff, for the work they did this past month, and I really appreciate it, and everybody have a good evening.
Thank you to staff, as always. Um, I've said it many times, I'll say it again, this town is the luckiest town in the state with the staff that we have and the job and work that they do. Can't say I'm sitting here feeling great, because when I moved to Weddington 32 years ago, uh, as one speaker earlier tonight said, things have changed. And yes, I will always speak up for an individual property owner's right to have the full and best use of the property that they are paying taxes on to their government. And I'll just finish by saying this, if this is the kind of leadership that this town feels they need and want, I'll tell you what my dad used to tell me. He said, "Son, be careful what you wish for, 'cause you just might get it." Thank you.
No, I, you know, we, we just, uh, just disagree, as you, as you see, and we have for the last year and a half. You know, it doesn't mean I don't disrespect Brennan or Jeff or Tom and Darcy, any disagreement. This is just, we're, we're passionate, and we should fight for what we're passionate for, and I think we, we have, even though we disagree with each other from time to time. And, 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 and again, so, uh, it doesn't mean I, I disrespect or don't think, I still think that, that the world will all, all for you guys. Uh, so, but the, but we do, we, we fight for what we're passionate for, and, and, and where I come from is, I, I fight for what I feel like, like I said earlier tonight, what I feel like I've been hired for. And, and so, um, that's, that's where, that's where I'm at with it, and, uh, and I appreciate all the emails that we get. We need it, we need the input, we need to hear from you guys, and, and without you guys, we're sort of like, you know, just wandering in the dark. And, and so, uh, you guys, um, let us, let us know. A lot of times I get so many emails and I apologize, I'll say, you know, thank you for your email, your, your input is greatly appreciated. That's sort of my two sentences, is because I'm getting, if I had, if I typed a big long email for everybody, it's like, I don't have time to do it now. But I at least want to, you to know that I got your email and we got your email and we're hearing you. So anyway, uh, again, thank you for coming out tonight, uh, I appreciate the attendance